This is the City Council of the City of Escalon, the regular meeting of May 20th, 2019. Would you please join me in the salute to our flag?
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Merkin is absent, an excuse. Councilmember Crummick?
Here.
Councilmember Legero?
Here.
Councilmember Alves?
Here.
Oh, Mayor Protem Swi-- or Alves, I'm so sorry.
Not a big deal.
And Mayor Swift.
Don't tell me late to dinner.
I did, I did upset you, didn't I? I did. I'm here, I'm sorry about it, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to.
No. All right.
At this time, we have a special presentation.
Very good.
And, see, would I, am I up first? I'd love to be up first.
You can sit in the driver's seat, bud.
Okay.
All right, get it done. Excuse me while I walk over to the dais. By the way, as I'm walking over to the dais, Chief, would you, would you like to introduce who we are giving this presentation to?
Yes, I'd like to ask Mr. Willis to please come up to the dais.
David Willis. All right, just wanted to make sure.
Hello, volunteer Officer Willis.
Got it.
A short, I'd like to read this to you right now.
It's in Braille.
Sure, but unfortunately this isn't in parts.
Oh, geez.
Uh, certificate recognition, the City of Escalon wishes to thank Dave Willis for your 300 hours in 2018 and 2019 of dedicated service to the City of Escalon Police Department and the Escalon Police Volunteer Program. The City Council of the City of Escalon thanks you for the dedication you have given the community with your time and commitment, all of which has made Escalon a better place for all.
He's 20th. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Don't ask him far, don't ask him far. I have something to add to that. And I can't take credit for his idea because I wish I could, but I'm not going to take credit for somebody else's good idea. Sergeant Lackey had brought something to my attention here, at about the same time that I know our Mayor Protem Alves and the council was thinking about acknowledging you. And so, I piggybacked on Sergeant Lackey's idea and said it was a great idea to acknowledge you. Now, as the mayor alluded to, over 300 hours of service since January 1, 2018.
Wow.
Now, that's what I can track. I know that doing our traffic control of our annual parades, you know, count on him like clockwork. Not only that, but he and Mike Genzler, two of the volunteers that we can call in the middle of the night if we need assistance, say we have a bad spill, and they'll come out and relieve our patrol officers so that they can get back to doing what they should be doing while they're maintaining traffic control. Public Works isn't here to assist, we can count on him. Tuesdays and Thursdays, we can count on seeing his smiling face at the PD. And, we count on that for a lot of reasons. One of them is, he provides a service that enables our staff to stay here in this community and not have to travel one or two hours each day. Because he makes our runs to the Griffin Lab to drop off evidence, or to Manteca to the court DA's office, or to the juvenile hollering French camp if we have documents. He handles all of that for us, and that relieves our other staff to stay here in town. Besides that, he also does a lot of vacation house checks that people, when they leave, he's usually making at least one or two checks a week on their residents besides patrol officers, besides just being extra eyes and ears for us. And then, most recently, he's been involved in a project that, I love the name he gave to it. He called it his escort service.
I love it.
And the thing is, is that on Tuesdays and Thursdays, he has come in to assist our seniors in crossing Escalon below them to get to the community center for their senior lunch. He is there to ensure that they make it cross before and make it back. And he does that religiously. And, you know, that alone is a major, major assistance to the organization. And, from, on behalf of the PD, and the POA especially, they have something here for you and your lovely bride. It's a gift certificate to the chefs of New York.
Oh.
And I'm not sure if you have one of these, but this is one of the challenge coins for the PD.
Well, no, I don't, but thank you.
But you now have one. To go along with your City of Escalon.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
There's more. You get a brand new quail, but I'm gonna give this to Bart so I don't lose it. Coming down anywhere tonight.
Yeah.
I didn't know this was for you. I think your example is what's so great about this community, why doesn't somebody step up to the podium like that? And you were a very funny example of that, you created all your work on behalf of the Escalon Police Department, it's my honor to recognize you on behalf of the senior members of you four.
Oh.
You got any words?
Well, you always do.
I always do.
Come on.
But how can I say them without getting in trouble and occupying a cell across the way? Well, you know, just thank you, I've enjoyed doing what I'm doing out there. It's, you get to see, you get to see things, especially the, you know, you get, you know, look at the seniors now, I'm meeting some really great people up there, and, and I just, ye, I'm lost for words. Well, now we know how to keep them shut up. Yeah. But you can't do this every time. But, the, wow, just, you know, I don't know, I, it's just, I've enjoyed it, now watch, I'll be late tomorrow. I mean, yeah, well, I hope I don't, I hope I can keep doing this at the rate I'm doing it. Now, I'm gonna throw a little light on my wife, lovely wife here. She has over 25 years, and I was thinking maybe I would have to go 25 years before I got that, you know, but I'll be 95. No, 94. Anyway, well, thank you very much, I appreciate this. Bottom line is, you epitomize what I would love to see in more people, because it's people like you that make this town a special town. And thank you for everything you do. Well, the truth is, when I pick up cans, it's to supplement my social security. I knew what you'd do with cans. Anyway, well, thank you, thank you.
You're not taking your wife for that?
No, I'm interviewing you. In my own trap.
Dave, again, thanks a lot for everything you do, okay? And you do an awful lot, so thank you very much. Moving on to the consent calendar, these items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by a single action unless requested by an individual council member or member, or member of the public for special consideration.
I have one question. With regards to these different districts and them being increased, did I read somewhere here they have till the next meeting to voice any objection? Is that what I read?
Yeah, at the next meeting is a public hearing regarding them, so...
And that will be in May 5?
No.
No, not May.
June 3rd.
June 3rd, that's what it was, okay, something like that. Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that, but thank you.
And, personally, I'd like to go ahead and pull items number three, four, and five. And the reason for tho, for that is because, as you know, I'm a landscape contractor and I am doing business with these three particular landscape districts, or districts, so therefore they're in the interest of conflict of interest laws, it'd be best if I stand down at that time, when we approach these. Do we have a motion on the balance?
Move on to staff's recommendation on the balance.
All right, hold on. Yeah, as to item number three, do I need to...
He's pulling item three right now, so we'll vote on the rest of them, on one, two, six, and seven.
Be in the balance?
Be in the balance, and then we'll address the other three.
Motion's been made to accept the balance, which is item one, two, six, and seven. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in the second to accept the balance of the consent calendar, items one, two, six, and seven. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes.
Okay, so on item number three, we're gonna have to continue that to the meeting of June 3rd due to a lack of quorum, because both councilmember Legero and yourself would need to be excused from those. Yeah, so that, item number three will be continued till June 3rd meeting.
So therefore, regarding items number four and five, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and step out of the room and hand the gavel over to Mayor Protem Alves. I do need us back, please.
I don't think you'll see it again.
I know.
Nice try.
And call me at some point this evening to get me back here, if you want.
Yeah, well, tomorrow's good. All right. Okay, was there any discussion before we move on?
For items four and five?
Yeah, if there is, come up, please state your name and...
I'll do it during the public session.
Is it regarding these reports, though?
But then it's gotta be done now.
Well, then you should, you should come up now.
State your name and address, please.
Kurt Danzger, 389 Noni, and, yeah, I didn't know if you were, if you were pulling them, you're not gonna vote on any of them.
Just item three.
Okay.
Just the Belatera district.
The, I was going over the proposed budget, and proposed budgets tend to actually ring true for your property taxes, for everybody that will pay them. So, where some of the numbers may fluctuate, that number's not gonna fluctuate, it's actually gonna show up on your bill. So, with that in mind, I had a couple of questions here.
Are we talking about three?
Yeah, Belatera.
Okay.
You could probably apply this to all of them, but I'm not gonna go into all of them, it's just the...
And three is the idea?
Two years ago, Belatera's EDU, per EDU, was $218.40.
Per year?
Per year, per property owner.
Per unit.
And, well, last year, it was $242.96, and we were told that because of the increase in water, which went up $3,000 over the previous year, that there was an increase, $87.86. That's a 39% increase in two years for the property owners for Belatera. And, like I said, I'm not gonna go into the other landscape lighting districts, but I'm sure that some of this applies. One of the big numbers that went up that I could see was the general government charge. Over last year, it went up $356. And, you know, I'm just, I'm just curious, at what point does, does this have to equate to every one of the districts? All the, the same government people are involved with all of the same reports, and that should be all relatively the same amount of money charged, and they're wildly different. They have the same input line items, they have the same contractor, what have you, and this number just keeps going up. We've gotta, I think, find a way to control it. I look at $12,000.
How does Belatera compare to the other ones in terms of units? Who has the most and less units of all these districts?
Well, the least units are Sunrise Terrace, excuse me, the Estates, then Sunrise Terrace, then Belatera, then Westwood Country.
So you're one under the top?
Yeah.
Okay.
Westwood Country, I think it's 177 units, now we're 143.
Okay.
And, interesting, just a sideways on that, we pay for 44 streetlights, $1,850 a year, they have, you know, considerably less, and they pay like 5,000. I mean, it's because they didn't switch over to LED...
EMI-D?
Well, no, the LED.
Oh, the lights, okay.
And maybe down the road, you could put that out to them, see if they wanna save any money, over those costs, the cost of LEDs, Justin tells me, has gone down markedly, so it wouldn't even cost what we paid. Getting back to this, the direct costs have virtually stayed the same from this year to last year, with the exception of contract services, Robert's company, that went up $500. And, that's a 1.6% increase. The city's general charge went up 12% this year over last, and, and so here we are, 39%, you know, for the homeowners there. I just find that, I don't know how these numbers are being calculated, that's why I'm asking, and hopefully we can sort it all out before the next meeting, when you're all gonna vote and approve these things. So, I wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, the, every time a cost goes up, for example, water or electricity, even though the city doesn't have anything to do with it, that general charge goes up, and it goes up 10%.
I have a question, just real quick, do I say something?
Go ahead.
Just for educational purposes, for myself and anybody watching, or anybody in the audience, these landscape maintenance districts, just explain a little bit what that is, and the 280 charge, what does that go towards?
So, I can explain that.
Okay.
So, when you have a developer that comes to town, it's common to have them set up a landscape maintenance district, therefore that district maintains the landscapes, whether it be the parks, the lights, within that subdivision. So, these were set up when the subdivisions were established, the tax, the cost of them are passed along to the property owners on their property tax.
Okay, yeah, I think I get that, so, we're talking about the cost per district and how they compare, right? And that's your issue, is that they don't...
Well, he's more referring to our general government charge, which, we did a study last year, when we did our users' fees, we also did an allocation study, and the consultant did a document that I use for the allocation of the general government. So, it's not a flat 10% of the cost, it's actually an allocation.
So, the city's in charge of these landscape districts?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
They're the trustee. So, we...
As I stated location and how I did it previously, he came up with a file that takes out any kind of charges that shouldn't, general government shouldn't apply to, or that general government incurs, and I used that, that sheet, that worksheet, those formulas, to calculate out the general government for everybody.
And there was also a study done on actual costs to the city departments, individuals, what have you. And, and a year ago, that was a $104, administratively, it's $104 an hour. So, let's say you add 3% escalator on it for inflation every year, it's $107. If you take the general charge and you divide it by $107, it's over 28 hours of a lot of people in the admin to come up with this report, which is generally, they collect the information, they pay the bills, yes, yes, they do, and if there's anything that has to be done at the developments, and the city goes out there, we get charged for that, that's all fine. So, you know, that's a lot of hours, you know, put into the thing. So, I challenge that on top of it there, because there's no indication, you know, we don't see a bill for electricity for water, we don't see water meter readers, you know, we just see a number here, we have no idea. There's been raining a lot this year, and it's the same amount as last year, and last year was raining pretty good, which was more than the previous year when we were close to being in a drought. And I bring these up because this is a living document, every year it's gotta get updated, and it needs to be researched, and it, and it needs to have, show us, you know, where are these charges are coming from, and how they're calculated. To fill you in a little bit more, in 1972, they passed this act in the street and highways, which was lighting landscape districts. So, we are perceived as having benefits beyond anybody else in the city, which, you know, we tried to argue that before, but, you know, we're not gonna do that. So, any developer that wants to come in here, let's say the Murphy brothers want to develop that site over there, the developer can't, will not get a permit unless he agrees that there will be an LLD set up there. And he's the own, the developer, the Murphy brothers, are the only property owners, so, you know, they don't need a vote, they say, okay. But, that sticks 72 other property owners with that for perpetuity, forever. It's not like a bond that'll go away, you know, after 20 years. And, again, I'm not disputing that. I, I've given up on arguing, you know, we have a special benefit over people on mission and that kinda stuff. I'd just like to see these numbers be accurate, and, and show me where, you know, where the costs are. Ed, you, you have to show your numbers when you bid a job, what's, you know, hours and cost and what have you, I, I'm just expecting the same thing.
Well, are you disputing the numbers or the methods?
I can't dispute the numbers, I just wanna see how they were arrived at, on these, on these reports.
Is there a way to do the report with more of a breakdown?
I, I don't know how much more of a breakdown I could do.
Electricity, sprinkler timers estimated at $53 a month, okay? Times 12, which they're not on for, for 12 months out of the year, that's $636, the bill's 700.
But is that the average?
That's what they're saying, it's an average. I, I can't contest that, nobody can, 'cause I don't, I don't see the bills.
Well, I don't know how, I don't know how much water you're using, or how the unit measures, or any of that stuff.
Yeah.
How would you know?
Meters?
We do use meters.
Okay, well, let's see it.
They would justify the...
Yeah, show, show how you justify the cost. And of course, they go up every year, because, you know, that's what's going on with our water rates anyway.
Everything.
But, let's show, show the work. I mean, if we're gonna pay the money, I think we need to be able to see that. It should be in the report, as an addendum, you know, show your work. If you just showed up at your high school and you handed in a math paper, and teacher doesn't know if you cheated or what you did, they wanna see your work.
Jamie, would that be a lot harder to do, to include at least...
Sure, it's gonna be more time consuming, yes.
It's, it's in the system, though.
Right, sort of? Okay. I understand your point clearly, and I don't dispute the point. I think your point's accurate and fair. The question is, how do we get there? Without, there's gonna be an impact, you understand that.
Yes, you're right, maybe we will, but maybe we won't, because they're gonna have to show how much time they've actually spent on these reports, too.
I'm sure they are showing.
That was, I mean, $3,000 to give the information to the contractor, you know?
Well, that depends on what was involved. Again, I don't know the dynamics of the process, for me to be able to evaluate that and say, "Look, you're right, I understand where you're coming from, and I agree with that." But, at the same time, if we're gonna do something like this, we have to look at it as broad as we can, just understand what's involved for what you're asking for, what the cost that's gonna be, and how it's gonna be transparent for you, okay? If we can arrive at an agreement where we can get what you're asking for without, but it's gonna cost more, I mean, that's the bottom line.
I, but you're gonna have to show where it costs more, versus what you're doing now, and what extra steps you actually had to take to put in this information. If you're gonna use estimates, let's estimate down.
Well...
You're not gonna estimate down, because you have a number at some point that justifies your estimate, hopefully. So, I don't know how much more time, an hour, two hours, I don't know.
Let's have staff answer that question.
So, for one thing, again, I'll go back to the general government, that is based on a formula based for allocating out the general government, that the consultant came, presented, and council approved. So, that doesn't necessarily break it down by hour. So, secondly, if you want detail of each of the expenditures, I mean, that's gonna require a lot of hours to make all of those copies and make the detail information.
Well, you're basically looking at water, and you're looking at electricity for the sprinkler system. The, the lights are fixed, the contract services are fixed, unless there's a tree added to the park, the capital replacement's fixed, that's not changing, the professional engineer has pretty much been fixed, the government charge is going up, the county administration fees goes up whatever they charge, so that, that's fixed, you don't have to do anything with that. And then, there are subtotals. There's another number in here, before I leave, and that is the operating reserve collection reduction, and I apologize, 'cause I'm not a financial whiz, I don't know what that means, but I, I think that, that has added, in this particular go-round, to the 39% over last year.
So, that is collection of reserve, for reserve funds in that. This particular in Belatera, there were two months where the cash flow was a negative, meaning that it was even using the reserves for its capital replacement fund, which is why we were increasing the, the operating reserve.
Why was that? Why were they short two months?
Because we didn't have, we haven't collected enough money.
From the county?
No. From the district, because the district's reserve should be enough to handle when we don't receive the money from the county.
Exactly.
There should, there should be enough money in there where it's not going negative, so that's why we're increasing the reserve balance. Because the reserve balance was drawn down...
We're paying because the county didn't get the money to the city in time.
No, that's not accurate.
Well, then, you just said that the county didn't...
What she said was, you have to maintain a surplus balance to accommodate the fact that it could happen, which it didn't happen.
And that was the argument last year, Ed. That was the exact same argument why it went up last year, there wasn't enough money in the fund, there wasn't enough money in the fund, so, I think it was $500 last year.
Well, the surplus fund that we're talking about...
And the operating reserve and collection for last year was $500, so I guess they needed $500.
So, so, can I, just really quick, 'cause we've gone beyond the five minutes, and we're not even voting on this district tonight. The, last year, we estimated that we were gonna end the fiscal year in 2000, June of 2018, with $6,900. And that is not what we ended the year in, when the actual receipts came in, we ended it with $6,000.
So you're $900 short.
And then, we have this year where the water has increased again, so, it, it's a, it has a bit to do with the timing of the reports and when you collect the money. This is a budget estimate, so we are behind when we're having to...
10% rise over last year to true this up.
The water rates went up again this year.
It went up $396, it's, so it says on this report, but I don't, I can't prove it or disprove it, I'm just saying.
I think that was the last hike?
Yeah, until we do another study.
Until we do another study, that was the last hike.
If you look at this sheet in those reports, it shows that the water was actually 12, a year to date was $12,396, so, you know, $396, you know, that's not 18%. And, so I'm looking at these things, I'm going, "Where are you coming up with these vast..."
You know, it would be, it would probably be better and more beneficial if we could sit down and have a conversation, because we have the same argument every year, and I try to explain that, but it doesn't seem like that...
Well, we've had arguments every year, but they're not always, it's not the same. I, I've given ground on just about every one of them here, my question is... I've given ground on just about every one of them here, my question is, why aren't we trued up? We trued up theoretically last year, we're way off this year, and the only thing I can think of is the county's lagging behind in getting money to the city to pay the bills.
It's not.
I don't know enough about this to give you any information right now, so I think what Tammy said's a good idea, if you sit down with her and can hash it out, I mean, I think there's nothing wrong with you requesting a more detailed report to show where your money's going, absolutely, but I don't know about the other guys up here, but I don't have enough knowledge of this to help you out right now.
Okay, it's right in your report, go ahead and read those things from time to time.
All I'm gonna suggest, Kurt, is that, have you taken the time to sit with staff and go over this before?
We've communicated back and forth on different issues.
Have you come in, sat down, and listened to her explanation?
We haven't physically done that, no.
Why don't we try that and see if that solves these problems?
That's fine.
Maybe you can get a better understanding of the dynamics of how this works, so when you have a question, you already know the answers because you now understand the process better, because, like you said, this isn't the first time, and it seems, first of all, it's hard to understand accounting in the city. I always have a hard time with it myself, but when I do have a problem, I generally go to Tammy, she's able to explain it to me. So, why don't we try that and see if we can get that, if not, then we'll have another meeting, which I'm gonna sit in on, and maybe one of the council member, and maybe we all three can find and figure out what the mystery is.
That's fine.
Is that fair?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now I guess we're gonna take a vote on...
On items four and five, item three is continued.
Thank you, I will accept the motion for the balance.
As to approve?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, clear ease three, oh, okay, now, do we bring Robert back?
Yes.
Okay. We have to fight for this, baby. Yeah, not really. Yeah, we'd like the power, man. Out of control. What was your name?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
That's it. All right, buddy.
Glad you guys didn't hear me snoring. Lovely, lovely.
Staff communications.
Mayor and council before you tonight are the monthly reports, including the treasurer's report, police department, animal control, recreation, water department, development services, our building report for April, wastewater treatment plant, and our citizen advisory committee quarterly report. We are available to answer any questions that you might have on any of those.
Can we get it on the big screen?
And think if you have any questions for staff?
There you go, that's good, that's what I wanna see right there, and, yeah, I guess, whatever you want to call it.
Got some?
I just wanna look at it real quick. I've looked at it, but I... By the way, we recently have done some work at the dog pound.
I don't think that we've did it yet.
We're in the process, what is exactly do we plan to do out there?
Oh, so I think you might be referring to the trunk line, because of the tear up of the road?
I'm referring to the compound for the animals.
Oh, I don't, have we did, we're going to be adding...
We actually just purchased a shed, it was actually purchased, say, it'll be installed on Wednesday for the freezer for the animals on the outside, so there's more room in the inside, and depending on the budget...
Either from the police...
Budget?
Police impact fees, or from general fund.
General fund, okay, because I'd heard some rumors about where we're gonna do something, I'm just curious what it was and what else was there, there was that, and then... I think that covers it for me.
Hey, gentlemen, anything, any other questions of staff regarding the staff reports? Seeing none, I know you have a few things, Tammy?
Yes, so, City of Escalon joins South San Joaquin Groundwater Sustainability Agency, which is the SSJ GSA, and myself, I am the primary board member, and council member Legero is the alternate. Council member Legero has asked if we could appoint a different alternate due to his schedules, so staff is asking if the council would appoint an alternate to that board, and I believe Mayor Swift has said that he would...
Watch how you say that.
For me, he would be the alternate, so he could attend a meeting on Wednesday.
So, do we need a consensus, a vote?
An action, a vote.
An action, okay.
I would move that we nominate, or you wanna do, go ahead.
And don't forget paybacks.
Oh, I know.
Just reminder, okay.
I move that the alternate to the Sustainable Groundwater Group, the Mayor Swift.
I would second that motion.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to nominate as the alternate to the Sustainable Groundwater Group, Mayor Robert Swift. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Better you than me.
Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, and I will be abstaining from this phone, by the way, all those opposed, please signify by saying no. Vote passes three to oh. Okay, what else you have?
Okay, um, the Lear Village Development, Mr. Lear has came to us recently and he's asking to make some minor changes to his developer agreement regarding the storage units. So, staff is going to be working with them on those, they are currently, the way that it's worded in the agreement are holding up his ability to get some funding for that structure, so we wanna work with him so that he can move on down the road with that.
Could you elaborate a little bit more?
Yeah, so the way that it's currently worded, it's considered part of the infrastructure, because...
What structures are we talking about?
So, all of those units that are being built over there do not have a garage, or...
Come out the condos he wants to make?
Yeah, on Main Street and...
It's the old police station.
Yes, so, part of the agreement was that he would put in storage units and the, for them to have someplace to put some outdoor storage. So, the original agreement is worded where it's deed restricted to the homeowners association, which makes it technically part of infrastructure when a lender looks at it, and that is holding him up from being able to get some funding on it. So, we just wanna work with him, ensure that there's still storage there available for those units. It's also driving up the cost of the homeowners association if he has to include it in that.
No, but they're not gonna be eliminated.
No, they're not gonna be eliminated.
What we have already agreed on.
Correct.
So, largely, staff sees this as just a minor point of order, not too big a...
Right.
And if anything, if it'll help the expedition of this...
That's where we're looking.
Very nice.
Just seeing what we can do to move it forward.
Okay, do we have consensus to allow this change, I'm assuming that all we're looking for is consensus?
Yeah, and really, you know, the planner is available, is able to make minor adjustments to the agreement, so we really just wanted to let the council know that staff is working on making those minor adjustments.
I have no problem with providing changes, nothing other than the technicality to help them get financing. Because if it changes anything else, I oppose it a hundred percent.
Okay.
I see some nod, I see four nods, so I'm gonna assume you have consensus.
Very good, thank you. And then, that's, I know Dominique has a couple other items.
I have her to be painted blue in front of her home, she lives by the high school and has difficulty with the parking in that area, being able to park out in front of her home and walk in to unload groceries and step out of her car.
Blue signifies what?
Handicap.
Handicap, disabled parking, sorry, I make that assumption, but yeah, blue curb is handicap parking. So, in accordance with the federal ADA requirements, there's a number of things that would need to be done to bring it into compliance. She actually does not have sidewalk in front of her house, she just has curb and gutter, so sidewalks would need to be installed. The City of Escalon doesn't typically install sidewalks on request, usually when we have an ADA complaint, if it was to come in, we would notify the property owner that somebody has made a complaint on that and then have to either ignore forward on the information to the property owner, or put them on notice that a sidewalk, the paneling would need to be installed, which are the four-foot blocks, so in this case, we're unable to follow through with a blue curb request because sidewalks would need to be put in, we don't have funding earmarked for that type of service at this time. Another issue that had come up with this is that typically, if we were to move forward with something like this and we go out and we have, provide this service, people would notice that there's a blue curb there, it's in a high-volume area where other cars are driving, it's in the older part of town, because it's over on Yosemite, so we make the assumption or have to prepare for an influx of requests coming in, I would like to have one, too, I also have a disabled placard. So, I wanted to ask the council if they wanted to move forward or wanted staff to look into putting together some type of blue curb or disabled parking policy, the policy would clearly define that you'd need to meet certain stipulations in order to qualify, which would include, you know, your location of your driveway in terms of how your house is on the property, you know, where your garage is located, because some of the houses in town have garages, some of them don't, some of them have them detached, some of them are attached. It just overall gives some type of review of the property and provides certain criteria that they would need to meet, along with, of course, having the DMV, disabled card, keeping that up to date, providing us with the renewal every time it's renewed, those type of items. Another item that we've seen is establishing, because once we put that in, the standard also requires the blue curb, it requires signage, so we'd have to post a sign, pole and sign with the ADA with the sign in the wheelchair and whatnot, so we would have, want to establish where it's renewed annually, renewed biannually, and then perhaps attach a small fee to it to be able to cover the cost of either painting the curb. It's, I haven't had a chance to look at all of our neighboring cities to see if they have a policy yet, more of the cities that I've found in like a rough looking at this is more in the Bay Area, that type of thing, so I still wanna do that. I just wanna know if the council, if this is a direction you want to go in and move forward with some type of policy, or at least setting up, and maybe it doesn't have to be as policy-driven, so much as establishing criteria so that we know which ones we should be approving and which ones not, so that we don't have an influx of them all over town if we're just going through and approving all of them.
It'd be interesting to start something like that, though, I mean, like in this lady's case, if she's also looking at curb and gutter, and there's no guarantee that she would be the person with a handicapped placard parking there, because once that happens, it's open season.
Once it's installed, we have to let the property owner know that anybody...
That's my question, what is the dynamics of her property, I mean, does she have a, is her place on the corner of this block?
Her house is on the corner.
Okay, so is her house on one side and the garage on the other?
So, what's interesting with this house is it's a duplex, at first, we didn't realize it was a duplex when looking at it, because it is a house. She is the owner, but they have split the house in half, so it's separated into two addresses, and she's on the corner in that part of the house, and then there's this another door to the other part of the house, and then they have a two-car garage. The two-car garage is on the opposite side of the house of where she's parking, and it does have a driveway, so that's why we wanted to establish some type of criteria.
Let me ask you this...
And it is, and whatever we do, we wanna be consistent on it to where we would move forward with that type of criteria with everyone.
If they have some of these in the Bay, excuse me, if they have some of these in the Bay Area, it'd be interesting to see how well they work.
Different animal.
It is a different animal, it is.
Talk about an impacted area in terms of parking.
I wanted to see if we had any in this area in general.
But let me ask you this.
We are not, and I did check with our city engineer, as a city, we are not required to put in ADA compliance sidewalk for anyone, and so that's where the standpoint's always been, that if sidewalk was required, we would request or...
We do the corner ramps.
We do, we do those, we've done those as a courtesy in the past, or to finish out of projects that are done.
Allows us to do those, we've done them in the downtown and other areas.
I don't know what other funding, we used to be able to use the CDBG funding for that, and they recently took that away from us.
It was CDBG.
It was CDBG, they used to give us about seventy thousand.
My next question is, the duplex?
Yes.
Are they separate meters, gas, electric, both?
I wanna say that they're separate water, but on one sewer, when we checked it.
Well, they can be on one sewer, provided...
When we went back and looked at it, and I did contact the assessor regarding the property, it's backdated to, I mean, they go all the way back to probably its construction, that it was always a duplex, so, but if you look at it, it looks like a house.
A duplex has separate gas and water, by definition.
Yeah, I'd have to check on the gas, I mean, I'd have to have just...
And it doesn't have those items, it was illegal.
And we would have to, we'd have to look into that more as well.
We have another set of things to deal with.
We do, I haven't gotten that far yet because I wanted to...
I recommend, before we do anything, we do a little more investigating, and I'd like to see the location and how it's affected on terms of the road and the frontiers, all that.
Sure.
Because I don't, here's the problem, I'm not against helping people that have disabilities, but if you open this can of worms, it could get really crazy.
Yes, and that's why I wanted to bring it to your attention and to try to establish some type of criteria, so that everyone that comes through, we have a list and...
Have you seen how many people have handicapped stickers and they get out of their vehicle and they look like they could run a hundred and nine flat?
Okay, so I wanna make sure, you wanna suggest to pursue researching this at this point, right?
Yeah, and I would bring something to you relatively quickly, because we have a request that's sitting, so I wanna make that a priority to work.
Is that consensus?
Yes. I'm not opposed to taking a look at the policy and seeing, you know, how that would look, but actually enacting it may be a different animal, so... Isn't somebody on, I think probably on Stanislaus, they just put a bunch of no parking signs up in front of their house?
They try. Get them down just as quick as they go up.
I don't know if that was a quick fix.
We have a couple areas in town that people don't want people parking around their houses, so they put up their own signs, or they block their own cones.
Public streets.
Yeah, and that's the issue, it is a public street, so then, like what Mayor was saying, if we painted it blue, it's open to anybody else that goes to that school to park there, so it might be we install it and somebody else is using it and it doesn't help her at all.
So, that's why I wanna make sure, because we seem very lukewarm on this, do we wanna pursue it, or do we wanna say, "Now let it go?"
And I won't make it something very complex, and I'd like to keep it simple, at least at first, where we establish criteria, you know, that's reasonable, practical.
Pursue it or let it go, what do you guys say, I'm getting the most lukewarm response I've ever heard from a show, just look into it, you know?
They don't have a sidewalk, they have curb and gutter, they wanna blue, they wanna paint it blue, and then we gotta put a sidewalk in, you gotta put signage, and you gotta do all these things, right?
Sidewalk would be required, we can't just go out there and paint the curb blue, which I'm thinking at this point is what she was thinking that we would be able to do, we can't do that because it wouldn't meet compliance, and then we're going out there and adding to it and saying that it's available for disabled, when there's really no pathway from there to be able to get to the house.
But the moment you do that, you're gonna say, you know, "But ma'am, you're gonna have to be putting in the sidewalk," which is probably gonna be cross prohibitive, and will not be in, not be any guarantee that she will be able to have her car there, because somebody else with a placard can park in there.
Yeah, it's possible, especially because she's across from a school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so where are you guys at, should we have Dominique spend some more time on this, or let it go?
I would say let it go. Yeah, based on this particular situation, it doesn't sound like it's feasible.
For her particular, yeah, that's why I wanted to at least establish some criteria first, and then, but it is not feasible as it is right now.
I just have a good feeling you're gonna be spending a lot of time, and I know what's gonna end up happening.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, so therefore, well, the consensus is that direction, now, let's, we'll pass on this one.
Okay, so what I'll do at this point is I would contact her and let her know the reasoning behind, what would need to be done in order to do it, and then if she was interested in doing that in order to obtain the parking spot, I could let you know at the next meeting, and then maybe from then, we would establish some criteria.
That's fine, that's fine.
Another thing I wanna know is the criteria for duplexes, because that is not a duplex by definition.
We can definitely double-check on that.
You have something else?
I do. Okay, so, the next item I have was back in two thousand fourteen, the owners of the Escalon Lumber, which was Marvin Schmidt, had approached the council asking for the council to approve allowing the use of steel beam storage or outdoor storage located on the, right nearby the tracks off of First Street behind the Escalon Lumber. We went ahead and moved forward with contacting the Colmans, who are the owners of that property. They're currently in a lease agreement with Escalon Lumber, lease with option to buy, and can become the property owners after the lease expiration, and we went ahead and advised them that we would approve the outdoor storage of steel beams as an approved as an incidental use to the primary use of the lumber and hardware business, however, some of you may be approved... Um, however, some of you may be approved that, um, may be aware that that business is currently being sold or it's an escrow. Um, so the approval to continue the incidental use, um, we had, uh, advised the Colmans that that would expire upon sale of the property or at such time that the current lease with, uh, with Coleman Trucking is terminated. Um, so it would technically terminate, um, on the, uh, sale of the property. Um, so we have been in contact with the Colmans. Um, they are interested in wanting to move forward with trying to continue the steel beam storage in that location. Um, it's currently not allowed, uh, per our zoning, um, code. Outdoor storage is not allowed in the community commercial, which is the C two district. Um, in order to move forward with that, I'd let Ms. Coleman know, and she is in the audience if you have any questions, um, that we would need to do a zoning amendment. The zoning amendment would need to be approved by the planning commission first and then come to the city council for approval. Um, at that time, if the planning commission wanted to move forward with that, staff would recommend that, that we would approve it with the, uh, approval of a conditional use permit. Um, that way the, the city would have flexibility in being able to attach conditions, um, to that use, um, so as to keep it how we want it to look in that downtown if we move forward with that. Um, and this is something, um, and I can answer any questions. So they're here today because they asked us to approach planning commission, which we did at their meeting last week, to get some feedback, um, because they would be paying for both the zoning amendment and then later a conditional use permit. Um, and I know we can't provide a one hundred percent guarantee on whether or not it would be approved, um, but we thought, um, it would be nice to at least have them be able to approach council, answer any questions, and then maybe get some feedback. Um, items that we were looking at, if it was to move forward on a conditional use permit, we did advise that we would be looking at, um, improvements to the property, whether it be screening or fencing, um, gravel on the lot.
Right, naturally.
Um, just certain criteria to bring it up a little bit more than where it's at.
Of course, yeah.
We didn't, uh, we didn't condition that before because it was supposed to be temporary.
What's the current zoning?
Uh, community commercial, C two, so that's retail.
We have to go industrial, right?
Um, so they did look into the idea of rezoning or moving forward on a rezone. It does cost more, um, and typically when you're rezoning property, you don't, you don't rezone by parcel. Um, so if we were going to move forward on, on actually rezoning, you'd want to rezone that whole area. Um, and so I'm not sure if that's something we would want to invest time and money into doing at this point.
Got a question.
Sure.
You're suggesting the whole thing has to rezone, but if he buys that part of that, his, his lease entitles him to have the first right of refusal to buy that. If he buys that, it now becomes a different parcel. It is no longer that parcel, complete.
It's a se, it's already a separate parcel and not included in the-
So there's four parcels out there, yes, um, so.
Why can't you zone that parcel versus the other three?
This is a parcel that runs parallel the tracks.
Along the tracks, behind Escalon Lumber.
Right.
Um, so you can, um, it's just at, at staff level and at zoning perspective, you typically take areas of town and you want them to all come on lumber was there. It was zoned the M one, which was the limited manufacturing. At some point, the city rezoned that into C two retail commercial because that's where our downtown is. That's where all of our businesses are, that location. That's our gateway in, into the area.
Seems like a retail, you have P and L there.
That's where it is, yeah, and so going back and rezoning those two parcels, it wouldn't-
But why would you impose that on the other parcels? See, this person wants one thing. These other parcels aren't asking for it. So what you're going to do is put the onus on them to improve their properties to something maybe they're not interested in. So why are we doing that?
Well, that's why we recommended not moving forward with the rezoning and instead opening up a zoning amendment to that, that, that zone, allowing for a conditional use permit. That way they'd be able to move forward under a use permit instead of a rezone. It's less money and it's-
But is that, is that parcel being sold?
There, the parcels there on are not being sold, no.
Okay, so what, so what's triggering this then? Wouldn't they be able to just remain as is until that?
No, at the transfer of, at the transfer of, uh, ownership or the sale of the property for, of Escalon Lumber.
So there was a portion of that parcel that the store, so the store crossed over or crossed it over two different parcels. So a portion of that parcel, they have to do a lot line adjustment for that sale. So they are taking a portion of that parcel.
But the, but the majority of the parcel that is already being used for the storage remains under the same owner, correct?
Correct, but your business is changing too, where it's not an incidental use to the lumberyard.
And they have no, it's not a storefront.
And the primary property of the lumberyard is what is being sold.
Right.
And that's the business that it was associated to. The property is being sold. That's what's triggering.
Well, the other problem is there's, the only spur in town is there. That creates an issue too. I mean, this person has a business.
Is there a spur?
I don't, I thought that the spur was not active anymore.
Uh, maybe it isn't. I don't know. I thought there was, but anyway, it might not be. So how is the steel getting there? Hauling it in?
They'd have to go through service streets, right?
To answer any questions here too.
Huh? Are they here?
Ms. Coleman's, is here, yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Yeah, would you, if, if you'd like to come up to answer any questions, that'd be great. Thank you very much for coming to this evening.
I have a question, unless you want to say, you want to start by saying something or?
Um, actually, I have a little bit of information that might help because you're talking about the parcels and it has a picture of the partials, so.
I thought that was cool. Isn't that, uh, what's, what's the gentleman Scott?
Scott is my stepson.
Okay, so that's how this works.
Yes.
And Kurt is your husband?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and Scott and Kurt are the owners of the company and I run the office.
Okay, good enough. Well, I didn't know that you were involved. I knew Scott because he was my neighbor at one point.
Yes.
So it's, it looks like from this that the, the line doesn't go through the actual shop, you know, the store.
Actually, what we're, um, leasing and will own at the end of the lease, um, is everything that's outlined in pink. And the old paint shop of the lumberyard straddles the property line.
So this is after the adjust, the lot line adjustment?
This is after the adjustment.
That's a picture from probably three years ago, so it's, it's not actually. Um, that lot line adjustment, if they're granted it, will go, will kind of come around, the whole paint shop will-
The paint shop's the little building next to it?
Yeah, yeah, off this-
Will it go past it, in it halfway, what?
Um, it'll go about twenty feet out.
Away from the building?
Away from the building.
Is that what this line represents now?
Um, it, yeah, it goes over to the right and then up because we have access out. Uh, they just tore the cement pad out so that we could actually drive out.
Where are you driving out on, on to?
On First Street.
By the track.
Right along the tracks, yeah.
Oh, that's right. I saw them jackhammering that up.
Yeah.
And that'll be your entrance and exit?
Um, that and Roosevelt. Um, we used to come in, kind of where P and L, that, the end of that cul-de-sac, if you will.
Yeah.
Um, but they put up cement blocks.
Oh, well.
Is something, right? Is that what we're talking about?
That, that's for the other, yes.
And then we're going to have to rezone it?
These are probably the correct.
Right.
Um, if that was the direction the council wanted to go in, we thought at staff level, it's more appropriate to, to give it a zoning amendment and then put it under a conditional, yeah, it's zoned commercial at this point, which doesn't allow for outdoor storage.
Doesn't allow for outdoor storage.
So it's supposed to be either, you know, in buildings or, or properly screened.
What do you want to see happen? What, what's ideal?
What, uh, well, I mean, if you look at the property, you can't really do much, we can't put a flower shop. Uh, you could put a flower shop there, but you're not going to do very well because it's kind of tucked back up against the rail track, railroad tracks. Um, what we do is we have a rail spur, a much larger rail spur in Riverbank, that we bring steel in and most of the time it goes straight to the customers, to the job sites. They're, um, large contractors, um, doing very large, like hundred thousand tons of material at a time. This yard, what we've been utilizing this for is we have a contractor that fabricates some of this steel before it goes to the job site. So we send it to the fabricator. We bring it back, put it on the ground for a month, two months, a day. Just depends on where their job is going and how fast it's going. Um, and then we ship it to their, their site. What we would like to do is obviously upgrade it somewhat. I've got some samples of some fencing that we're looking at.
Wow.
Um, that, one of them even says it has ninety-eight percent soundproofing, which would be nice for that area. Um, and it also looks good. We're also going to try to level it off. We're going to rock it, um, road base in there, keep the dust down.
How are you going to do with the runoff from the water?
Um, whatever is suggested, we're going to have somebody look at that so that we can take care of that as well. Um, the little house that's there that used to be years ago, I don't know if anybody remembers, the Ag-
Yeah.
Office.
Yep.
Um, we would, we're talking to the owner about possibly purchasing that so that we would have an office there.
And you'd finish out that whole corner that way?
Yeah.
That'll look a lot nicer.
Yeah, so put some nice fencing, take care of the ground so it looks nicer.
Could you put a fence parallel with the tracks?
I don't. It, it would have to come out of ways because they, the railroad owns a, an easement.
How far off the tracks is the easement?
I'm not really sure.
Forty-five feet?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five feet?
Yeah, I didn't think it was much, but yeah, we could, if that's what was needed to kind of, for safety reasons or whatever.
Problem I'm worried about the fence is the echoing off the train now because you build a fence there, that's going to put all that sound right in the downtown.
Well, we wouldn't necessarily need to put a fence there.
You put a cyclone fence maybe or something that wouldn't rebounce the sound off of it.
Um, we were actually told that, uh, chain link fences aren't allowed.
I'm sorry?
We were told that chain link offenses were not allowed.
But we got to find something that's not going to bounce that sound back over in the town.
Yeah.
Because it's loud enough without having that go on top of it.
We actually hadn't planned up on initially putting a fence right there, just kind of wherever to block the view. We hadn't actually thought about putting a fence right there. We were just kind of trying to obstruct the view or make it prettier from-
Pretty much where the, the reddish pink line is, is where you were looking at putting the fence.
But if we needed to put a fence, we could put like a chain link fence where the rail tracks are.
Trees or something to-
Something.
Period, so you don't have to look at it.
Yeah, exactly. Um, and like I said, we're leasing the ground. Um, if we can't continue to do what we do there, we're not going to give up the lease, so it's just going to be an empty lot. Um, so it's kind of, you know, you look at it and you think, well, what can you do with it? It seems like the perfect, managed properly, having it as a transitional yard for us, steel storage, whatever. We wouldn't-
Put any buildings on, you think, in the future?
We could, yeah.
I'm just curious.
I mean, it's a large, it's a really large-
How many acres, is it an acre, two acres?
I, eh, can't remember what it said in the thing.
Feels like an acre.
Yeah, it's about an acre or three quarters at least between the two parcels.
So I have a question.
Yes.
So I, I see the benefit to your company and I see the benefit to the current property owner, but what's the benefit to the city or the, the community generally by having this business there?
What else would you do with it?
Well, I mean, is it, you know, aesthetically, you know?
Actually, it would be much nicer looking with some of those fence samples that we were looking at. It would be much nicer looking than a big dirt mess.
Does it generate any income for the, the city?
No. I mean, business license, but right now it's like-
A hundred and fifty, I think.
Yeah, a hundred and fifty dollars.
You're not looking to really do anything. You, you're already doing what you're going to keep doing.
Yeah, we just would like to be able to-
How long has this been going on now?
We've actually had the steel there, um, I want to say since two thousand twelve.
There you go, six years.
Or previous to that.
In my memory, that sounds about right, yeah.
Yeah.
So the reason this item's coming up is because of the transfer in ownership and the, and the business, um-
Primary location.
The primary location, changing ownership. Um, it, we had stipulated in that agreement that they would need to relocate or find somewhere else to do it. So when that close of escrow date hits, um, they have about forty-five days to relocate off the property. That's what was currently, yes.
They, they have to move off property when the business sells.
Yeah, when, when escrow closes on, on the, on the Escalon Lumber.
That does, yeah, that doesn't sound right because they've already been doing it and they've, um, they're just going to keep doing it. It sounds like they're fine with the zoning change. I, I don't really see what's, it seems like we're kicking them off.
Well, because it's, it's not a, it's not a use that's allowed. We, we were, we were asked to allow it by the council because the, the prior owner of Escalon Lumber wanted to keep it there for his business. He's no longer the owner of that business and so we conditioned it to where if he ever sold the property at the close of escrow or the termination of his lease with the Colmans, uh, we would, we would have them relocate because it was supposed to be temporary. We approved it as a temporary incidental use to that primary business. So that primary business is changing ownership and is no longer-
I understand that.
Yeah, going to be there. So we conditioned it for the forty-five days that they would need to vacate. So it's in escrow now. Once it closes escrow, they would have the forty-five days to remove, which we're flexible with allowing more time for them to move.
So in what scenario is it permitted for them to stay there and do this?
If we move forward with the zoning amendment and then issued a conditional use permit. And that's what staff is recommending, um, so that we can put it in writing and, and stipulate conditions of it that meet the city's standard if we're going to allow it in that part of town that's currently not allowed.
So it would be an exception to the zoning or will, will, by all ri-
We would modify the zoning amendment, we would make a zoning amendment which would allow for a, outdoor storage under a conditional use permit. So then from then on, anybody who wanted to do outdoor storage in the C two area could now, instead of us just telling them, no, you can't do that, they would be allowed to approach the planning commission and obtain, and try to obtain a conditional use permit to be able to do so.
When you say outdoor storage, do you mean outdoor as in fenced in? Can we require them to fence it in?
With a conditional use permit, we could, we could require it to be fenced in. We could attach conditions to it to make sure that it's done through our standard.
They still have to go to the planning commission?
Uh, yeah, the zoning amendment would go to planning and council because it's, it's Title seventeen zoning. It has to be approved by both bodies to make that change.
Right.
Um, and then the conditional use permit would go to planning commission.
And what we're looking for right now is basically what you'd like to know is what, what are the odds of-
So what's just going to feel for it?
To be thinking about something like this.
So, I mean, what does council see for that area, you know? We have it zoned commercial, is that?
I see it for steel, outdoor storage.
I, I've got to be honest with you. I remember this whole, this whole time.
Uh-huh.
And I remember, you know, going through it and, you know, Randy and, you know, he's helping you out and made, and he, he was helping you out and you're helping him out.
Absolutely.
Makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
So I remember going, going, talking about this, this entire agreement at the time and the way you've described the spirit of it is exactly how we described it. No, no, we really don't want to have something like that there, but for Randy, hey, let's make an exception. So what I didn't know about was that the lease to own agreement. Because now essentially we're in a situation where you, you'd like to go ahead and own it.
Well, we're going to.
Yeah, and so it's either, so you're either going to have metal, the steel there or you're going to have nothing there, which it feels like, because we did not know that part of that agreement, you know, that, that Randy made with you.
Yeah, we did not know that.
We've kind of sort of been checkmated without knowing it. At least that's how I feel right now.
Not really.
No. What are our options?
Well, we've got as many as we want.
We don't have to, they can continue on with the agreement they have with the Schmitz.
Mm-hmm.
And, and we can decide that this lot line adjustment isn't triggering the sale that triggers the, the change in conditions.
Bingo.
And then it remains, they continue on as long as the Schmitz and the, you know, that they have the property and, um, the agreement just remains in place as it is currently. Then if the Schmitz decide that they're going to sell it, then apparently there's a first right of refusal with Colmans. And then if they, you know, if they're going to purchase it, that triggers the, um, expiration of the current agreement. And then that would trigger us making a decision at that time whether we're going to rezone it or whatever.
Yeah.
The, the biggest issue I have with this is there, I don't see a benefit to the city to do this. I mean, it's using the property, but it's not generating commercial income for, for the city.
Mm-hmm.
So if we tie it up by allowing this, this use to continue there in perpetuity, then are we strangling ourselves from a potential resource?
But we are, we own, we will own it.
Regardless.
Regardless, and if we have to buy it tomorrow, we will. So it's never going to get used for anything.
Well, it, it would be, if you were to, to buy it, your goal would be to continue using it in this fashion, correct? So.
Or just because it's property we own and, you know, down the road.
You would make the improvements for aesthetic improvements, which would definitely make it look a lot better.
Yeah.
Than just an empty dirt lot.
Yeah.
So the fence ones, you're showing these different types of fences, they're pretty ambitious fences. Those are pretty nice. And if you did the proper landscaping, it would look like a park from the outside.
Yeah.
So I think the issue is they're going to own it. Do they own it, empty lot we have in town, or do we own it with a nice fence around it?[1785.22] And with landscaping?
Well, and the ground that's in the, that's going to happen with the property line adjustment, if that's allowed, we never leased anyways. That little piece that he needs, um, the new owner, we never leased that portion either anyways.
You're talking about the old house there on the corner?
No, 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 the, um, store.
Uh-huh.
The, the large part of the building, and then there's like a little addition. That's where the lot line adjustment is happening, is where the store is.
It's the primary location of the lumberyard that's being sold.
Yeah.
Right, right, right.
Triggering it, yeah.
Where do the trucks come in here? They're, are they coming off of First Street?
Uh, they come in off of Roosevelt usually, um, and then leave on First Street. We probably won't have any trucks coming and going for the next several months, cause we just finished a large job, and we won't have another one start up for probably three to four months, so the truck traffic is hit and miss.
I could see first being challenging for a truck traffic major.
Well, it's not that much truck traffic. It's like one or two.
How many trips do you think you would generate?
In what time period?
Yeah, within a year.
I'd, if it was a relatively big job, I would say maybe two or three hundred over a year.
Over three, over a year?
Maybe two hundred in a year's time.
And the hours that you do the moving of your, what type of time of day is this going on?
Um, typically between eight and three. We don't like to be over there after about three, three-thirty.
What about weekends?
Um, occasionally we do some, um, forklift work over there. We may load one, one or two trucks if we're really busy, but typically, no, we don't like to work on weekends.
Fabricate there?
Pardon me?
Will you be fabricating?
We do not, no.
So, you have no water, no sewer, and no electrical. Is that correct?
Correct.
Now, if you encompass that little house back there, you'll get all of those.
Yes.
What are the odds of that?
Uh, according to, when I spoke to the gentleman at Wentworth, sounded pretty good.
Okay. Interesting.
Yeah.
So, what, so tonight, you're looking at from us for just a general?
I'm just looking for, am I wasting my time at this, or is this something that you would?
Regarding the possible zoning, rezoning, or, well, it all depends on how many exceptions we wanna.
Have, have fees attached to them.
I'm sorry?
The fees aren't necessarily a concern. My time is a concern.
Right, that makes sense.
I mean, if it, obviously the fees that I would have to pay to get it rezoned are a lot cheaper than trying to find another yard in Timbuktu. I mean, we're in Escalon. I'd like to keep what I can.
Right.
In Escalon.
Okay.
So, and, and council knows you can't act upon it tonight. They're just, yeah, because it's not an agenda item.
I mean, I'm just trying to get an idea if it's a hard no, or.
Well, just to be clear, you can only give some.
Together.
This is not an agendized item, therefore, you're free to give some feedback about your interest in it, but you really need to be cautious about making anything that sounds like a commitment at this juncture.
How about this, I'm not totally opposed to it. I'm not totally opposed to it.
I'm very, um.
I think I would frame this more in terms of what you'd like to see happen next, rather than something that sounds like a vote.
Exactly. What other information would you need?
Well, the ne, the next steps, whether that's to meet with staff or whatever that might look like, that's the type of information that I would give.
How about if, uh, staff takes another look at and brings us back some more information to give us a clear picture of what's gonna happen if we move forward?
I, yeah, okay. I, I don't know what more information though, without actually hearing the whole item.
I personally, I would agree with the fact that you got a yard there that's doing nothing, that's gonna do nothing, and our chances of bringing a business in based on pl, past performance are pretty zero. So, here we got somebody who owns a business. Granted, we don't make a lot of money off of it. I get that.
I don't think we make anything. It'll just be, we don't have a lot of options.
But, but if we did grant them the right to use it, and they put a nice fence and landscaping around it, it'd look a lot better than it does now.
That's true.
So, that's how I look at it.
Yeah, that's, but I wouldn't say we're granting them anyway. They're gonna have the property.
And I think, the concern that they don't bring any money to the town is, is totally a false idea, because, uh, they do bring money in terms of, they bring, uh, their workers are working, they, they, their customers. There's a lot of other ancillary benefits to a community, rather than providing a whole bunch of sales and, uh, and property taxes, so, or sales taxes, I guess.
Looking back, they didn't bring squat. They don't.
Well, I don't think they'll have a consensus on this, but, uh, if this is enough to give you a direction as to should you pursue the, put the time into it. You know, again, evaluate if it, if it is enough to tell you to put the time into it, rock and roll.
I appreciate your feedback greatly. Thank you.
Thank you.
And did you have any other items, uh, Dominique?
Uh, let's see. No, that is it.
Okay.
Just a quick note. Um, Chief, you have something?
Just one.
Go ahead.
Uh, you'll probably, I'll be probably coming to council to do some swearing in of new personnel here at the next two or three meetings. We have some backgrounds that have been completed. I'll be adding some level one reserves to our force here, and hopefully the first one will be at the next meeting.
Very good, very good, excellent.
We're still, uh, on track for that Operation Blue in December, right?
It's still in the works. Uh, I haven't followed up with that, the company per se, but, uh, it's locked out on the calendar.
Okey-dokey. So, that's it?
Justin, did you have anything?
No.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to make a note that I will be on vacation starting tomorrow till the thirty-first, so.
Very good, very good. Enjoy.
Available, available phone and email.
Absolutely.
Move, moving on to matters presented from the audience. At, at this time, the public may address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is, is within the authority of the council. Speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes, and Chief, if you wouldn't mind, you know, keeping half an eye on it. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. The determination of whether an item is within the authority of the council is a discretionary decision made by the mayor, but more often than not, it's usually pretty obvious that they're within our authority or not, so.
Thank you.
Al Ballinger from, uh, seven nineteen California Street. Uh, this is Curtis Vaughn. He's our commander of the American Legion, post two, six, three. I'm the sergeant-at-arms of, uh, the same post. We have our senior go-to guy back in the audience, Angelo Blanco. We have any problems, we go see him. Uh, what we're here tonight for, uh, I had a phone call, and I apologize if I say your name wrong, Crummich?
Crummich Shattler.
Okay. Anyways, I had a call from him the other day regarding the, excuse me, the memorial wall at the, uh, community center, and what entails, how it arrived and all this. Well, I wanna explain something, that when we put those extra pillars in, that was because we could not at the time put any more bricks on existing wall. We could not find a contractor that wouldn't, wanted to inscribe a brick, because if you break a brick, you're done, cause you could mess up two or three other ones. So, that's when we decided to put the two pillars up. Each pillar will hold approximately a hundred and fifty names, and, uh, we have two, there's room for two more pillars beside it. And we left the centerpiece so handicapped people could get inside and, uh, think. So, we have, um, the way to get on it, to become a brick owner, you might say, is, first of all, you have to be a veteran. You have to be honorably discharged from the service. That's the main thing. The second thing, or the, the following things is that we have a form, and I have some, if anybody wants to put a brick on our wall for us, uh, to fill out. What that is, it gives us their name, their ranks, what service they was in, what times they was in the service. Then, we got one of the following three or four commitments. You have to live in Escalon. You have to graduate from Escalon High. You have to work in Escalon, or you have to be a member of our American Legion, post two, six, three. We have a lot of members that live, that belongs to our membership, that belongs out of the city of Escalon. But that was one of the, some of the requirements that we have. The reason that we did it that way was so that people from Stockton, Modesto, whatever, come and fill up our wall. We, we are a community, and we're very lucky here, because personally, I wanna thank the city council and the staff. They've supported us. You guys have supported us for years, and we do appreciate that. We have a community that supports all of our functions. Uh, to give you an example, um, the mayor was at our first-time breakfast on, uh, Armed Forces Day this past Saturday. Uh, I hope you got enough to eat.
Oh. It was all very good, too. My daughter loved it, too.
But that's the first time that we've had it in our post after we remodeled it. Now, anybody here that wants to see what we've done to our post, please feel free to call me. I have the hardest number in Escalon to remember, eight-three-eight, three-three, eight-eight. Threes and eights, that's all you have to remember. But, uh, that's what we wanted to do. If you have read any of the flyers that she passed out, there is a couple that I really wanted to attack, you might say. The Honor Guard for Veteran Funerals, we're one of the few that compete, that continue to do it locally. Now, we started out about fifteen years ago and only doing about five or ten a year. As we got better at it, we progressed. By progressing, we went from that to, a few years ago, we did forty. The last three years, we've done fifty-nine funerals, veteran funerals, a year. This year, to this date, we've done thirty. So, we do an Honor Guard for all the veterans. We're, and we, we cover, uh, Burrwood, Saint John's, Farmington, Valley Home, Ripon, Manteca, and sometimes out at Houston at Lakewood. So, we have an area that they call on, it's a lot of funeral homes calls it, to do it. That's one thing. Um, we have coming up our biggest, longest day that we do is Memorial Day. We provide, uh, flags for Burrwood. We, uh, give Burrwood, there's eight hundred and fifty.
Maybe give him an exception.
Eight hundred and fifty, uh, veterans at Burrwood. And if you go out there on Memorial Day, you see a flag at every veteran that we know of. If you go to Saint John, there's about a hundred and fifty at Saint John. Farmington, there's a little over a hundred. There's a hundred and forty at, uh, uh, Valley Home. We do four services that day. We start at Burrwood, we go to Saint John's, then we go to Farmington, then we end up in, at the Valley Home. In the meantime, in the morning, at seven o'clock in the morning, when you drive down the street, you see flags on both sides of the street. We put the flags up. After we do all the, the services, we come back, take all the flags down, and we go out to Burrwood and take over eight hundred flags down. So, what, I really came to thank you people, and hopefully that if there's any questions regarding the American Legion here in town, uh, please feel free, Curtis or myself, or somebody, anybody in the Legion, will be able to try, tell you what we try to do.
Yeah.
And we're always open. I know they call us on, when the Little League starts every year.
Parkview Parade.
Uh, don't forget all the parades.
That's right.
I tell, I tell everybody, they don't start a parade in Escalon without us.
Mm-hmm.
Without me doing it.
And you don't mind if, again, I asked you this the other day, I will ask you it again, you don't mind if I scan this and put this on Facebook to share? Because I know that Stephanie's with the chamber, she will share this to everybody, and this is some really important stuff that I'll tell you, I bet you a lot of people in town don't realize.
Well, that, that's one of the reasons that I came, that's one of the reasons that we made out that form, and that's probably just a part, there's, we probably forgot some of the things that we've done. But, uh, no, we would appreciate that for anybody that has, that would get information for us.
I'd say Escalon's very lucky to have as active a chapter, uh, as we have with you guys.
Well, we only do that because we have an active community. Community sports.
I would, um, like to note that they do the boys state, and what that is, is my son was fortunate enough that he got picked to go to the boys state, but they actually set up actual governments there and go through the process of what a government does. So, they are actually learning government when they go there. So, I thought that was very interesting, um, and I was glad that, you know, he got to go and see that, and that others get to go, cause it is a neat experience.
That's, that's, we send two boys. Uh, if there's more than, uh, uh, seven people that we interview, we'll send three or four. And it does cost us two hundred and eighty-five dollars to send one kid.
Hmm.
How much?
Three eighty-five this year.
Mm-hmm.
Three, three eighty-five to send one boy. We always, minimum of two. We like to send more.
Yeah. They spend, they usually spend about a week. Well, they do spend a week at Sac State. Last year, they had almost a thousand boys from statewide that was there. We don't provide transportation anymore. They have to provide their own transportation, but they go up there and they learn everything, every aspect of the government, uh, from president all the way down to city council and everything else.
So, they set up their own little cities, and they have the, all their own little local governments, and.
They have police chiefs and everything.
Yeah.
And they have a week to do it in.
Has this post been, uh, continuously operating since after First World War?
Yes.
Wow.
American Legion was started in nineteen nineteen.
I was a county member.
I'm not, I'm old, Ed, but I'm not that old.
Join the second year.
Man, I'm a county member.
This post is named after one of the, the one or two World War One veterans that we lost from Escalon.
Yes, yes. That's, uh, uh, that's, that's how our post got named, was the two veterans in World War One.
What are the names?
Justin Thompson. You thought I'd forget that, didn't you? I stubborn, stuttered.
No, it's, we're, we're very honored to have this post in this community and all the work that you do for us and for this community. And I can't think of a, a parade or an event that I've gone to since I was a kid, where, you know, the, the flag hasn't been there, you haven't been there presenting the colors, so I just, you know, I, I think we're, we're pretty lucky to have, like Mayor Swift said, such an active post, so.
We're very fortunate. One more thing, we're very fortunate in Escalon. Uh, I have not been able to find another American Legion that presents the colors at a high school football game. We do it for every home football game and every playoff game. When we go to Stockton, we get to do it up there, too.
Perfect. It's a great message to send, too, to the, the kids that see that, so.
So, if there's any, yeah, we go to high school on Veterans, just before Veterans Day and do our thing. So, if there's any questions later on, catch me. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, anybody else like to, uh, speak? This is your opportunity.
Angelo Blanco, sixteen oh four Fisk. That young lady was here about lumberyard and the storage. Put a fence around it, fine. But I don't know if you guys, about three o'clock, anywhere from say, two fifteen to three-thirty, there's about four buses lined up there. Stop sign down there. Train sometime stops, the Azor Band, when they have a function, there's cars all over. When you come into Escalon, you pass the beauty, that, uh, beauty poller, it's all dirt in front of the lumberyard, all the way to the tracks. So, if you wanna beautify Escalon, now, I got nothing against her. If it comes to her, do it, she puts a fence around it, but everything should go out in Roosevelt. No, no trucks. They sort of clean that by the railroad track. You think they're gonna come, I guess, bringing a forty footer through there, but.
Not too sure.
It should all, do do it, make them all come in Roosevelt. No trucks come out that section, and leave it open for us, school buses. But when you say you want people to come to Escalon, we gotta have a, some kind of a park, like if I was a plumber or a electrician, I wanted to have a little building for my business or anything, a cabinet maker, a little rug shop, anything. They can't, there's no place to rent. You know what I mean? It, it should be like a light industri, you know, for light businesses. It'd be a perfect place. Plus, that's only about a hundred yards from Main Street. Big old forty footers, which is, if that, we gotta do, we gotta do it. But I'm thinking if we do do it, make sure that you guys have a fence around it, which is fine, and try, I'd be, I don't know if you could get them fixed that sidewalk in front of the lumberyard or do something with that, would be nice. Once you got that, you know, the beautification, if you could, but if you have to do it, make them Roosevelt. Thank you.
That was a very good point, Angelo.
Really think about it, you guys, you know, think about that, really. Yeah, they, they dug that all out like I think they're gonna put a road there. Hell, it's only about ten feet from the railroad track. How you gonna get Game and Corn to pick up around there?
It's a good idea. It's a good point.
It's a very good point.
They can come in it and go out the other end.
Look at the, the, what's the weight out there without trucks?
Yeah, I'd like to continue on that, uh, notice, too. Um, this is a point of procedure. This came in back asswards. Shouldn't come to you. Should go through the planning commission. The, the same person showed up at the planning commission, weren't on the agenda. There was a lot of concerns about costs that it was gonna cost them if they didn't go this way or that way, which was their main concern, I guess. We told them, meet with staff, put your proposal together, and then bring it back to us. You shouldn't be listening to it like this because you're making assumptions that you, you don't know anything about. They don't provide income to the city. They're gonna tear up Roosevelt. There's not a lot of people involved in that. So they're not bringing any money into the city. So if it's, if it's empty or it's, you know, they're gonna be there, we've gotta look at it. You know, how is this gonna benefit Escalon? You know, we've had, uh, these gentlemen who are just up here, they benefit Escalon. We got, you know, all kinds of different people that wanna do stuff. We have a lot of vacant lots in this town. Has been pointed out that we could put housing on or, or change it, but I don't think we need to go through the procedures the way that we just did. I don't think it's fair to that person and I don't, I know it's not fair to you because those questions should have already been answered and then handed to you and then you can fine tune them if you, if you wanted to. So that was my point. Thank you.
Well, we didn't commit to anything, Kurt. What we did was say, let's take a look at it. That's all.
Yeah, but, uh, they don't wanna do that. They haven't, they haven't.
Choice.
They haven't put together a package yet, so.
But they haven't got anything done either.
How, how can you say yes or no or maybe so? You know, you can't.
I just said it's worth looking at.
We couldn't.
I think it's worth looking at.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, you could, uh, you can just point them to the direction of the planning commission and get it through there first and then you don't have to waste time with it.
They're gonna have to go through that way anyway. It's just like a courtesy thing. I mean, let them come up, get it off their chest.
I know, but, but.
We don't have to say stop. Go to them or I gotta talk to you. It's okay that they come in and do that, in my opinion.
But you know, actually, this is a very important point that I think you made because essentially what I think what they wanted to do was to know, okay, listen, am I, is this worth me pursuing my time to this? You could have everybody coming in with that same idea, every project. We could have five people a night trying to feel us out, feel you guys out.
But what's wrong with that? What's wrong with that?
Well, nothing, as long as somebody's brewing the coffee at ten o'clock.
Would you rather, would you rather be in a situation when you go to the planning commission and you pay and jump through all the hoops to find out you can't? Because you absolutely didn't know prior to that, there was no way they were gonna listen to you. At least they come here, it's not, we said get the hell out of town. We said, listen, okay, we'll hear it. Let's listen about it. I, I don't see anything wrong with that at all.
Yeah, why don't I have all the answers? But like I say, to me, I can see it going south if we keep blending the seven. Or I can see it being a very good thing. You're right. I would love to be able to have people get an ideas what they're, what they're gonna be up against. You know, what do you guys think? You know, maybe it's better ideas, ask a couple planning commissioners individually or a couple council members individually. I don't know.
It's not gonna go any further than that until they go through the hoops anyway.
Yeah.
All this is, is a courtesy check to see if the town was a hundred and fifty percent against it. And if that's, if we'd said that tonight, they wouldn't be calling her or anyone else.
Well, if it'd been on the agenda as a citizen, I would've got up and had my say.
Well, you always have to say anyway, Kurt, so.
Uh, well, you know, you.